IT is ready. Lupe, could you just give us a communications check one more time? Yeah, we're not, we're not receiving your audio. Let's see if I can get IT to run over and see if they can give me some, some help. All right, Lupe, IT is gonna come over and see if they can provide some assistance to get your microphone working properly. But again, I don't want to be disrespectful to the committee members' time, so. Okay, great. And Brick is gonna set up in the conference room, Lupe, so that is our, our Plan B, or maybe now our Plan A. You can feel free to join him in the conference room and use that same computer. If the Chair wishes to kick off the meeting, IT is ready to start recording and screaming, and we can do so.
Okay, for the record, Don Taylor, Chair of the Measure U Oversight Committee. We're opening the meeting at 2:07 PM on December 3rd. Roll call, Diaz Conti, I don't think that person is here, right?
No, I don't think so.
Mendez?
Present.
Claris?
Present.
They could hear you at the beginning.
Scrivner?
Oh, you're lighting up there.
Uh, Scrivner is present.
Thank you. Taylor, present.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. So we have a record of four members present, one absent, and I will also note that Curtis, I know you're attempting to help out Lupe, we can hear your voice, so that was working. Thank you for that. And once again, Lupe, the City Manager has set up an large conference room, so if you wish to join him there, if there's any ongoing issues with your audio, please feel free to do that.
Okay.
Thank you, apologies for the interruption.
Okay, and I'm not aware of any public comments, so do we proceed to the presentation at this point?
I have a question. Do we need to reelect officers again because we've had a change of membership?
That's an interesting question. I haven't reviewed that issue in the bylaws, but I wouldn't think so at this time, nor would it be appropriate, as it's not an agendized item.
Okay.
Okay, so is there any more comment from anybody present?
I have a question. Are we gonna be doing these quarterly? Like we had originally, Don, when we were on the, on the panel? Were we doing it, you know, every, you know, quarterly? Or is it gonna be one time, once a year? I'm just curious.
Madam Chair, if I may be able to put some context in the moving forward with the Measure U Committee, and how we intend to leverage your expertise and participation. Yeah, I think, you know, in the past, it took a while to get this rolling, and then it was somewhat infrequent, and it was pretty narrow scope. So what we've endeavored to do is preload quarterly meetings that coincide with HDL, and you'll meet Brett Plumley pretty soon, who is our liaison, who does our in-depth analysis of our tax collection, and also makes projections and forecasting around all of our revenue through tax, including Measure U. The other thing we've done in the past is we've not really assigned Measure U revenue to any of the allocations that were in the original resolution. There was four, or there was five elements there. So in this past budget, we, we built a budget and we coded budget items that were consistent with what was part of a commitment in the Measure U resolution. And we're gonna, again, marry those two things up, the expenses associated and identified and targeted against Measure U, but also marry that up with our quarterly, our tax reporting. Just, just keep in mind that every time we get these updates, it's for the quarter prior, so we still have three months that will not be analyzed. And so that will change dramatically what we've done in the past, and we're gonna preload these meetings so that committee members have some anticipation where they're gonna be. I hope that addresses that question, as well as maybe some others that committee members had.
Okay, thank you. Brick, I do have a question, because basically, we had a formation meeting, we had a training meeting, and I think we had one actual meeting, refresh my memory, Sharon, it was.
We had the Brown Act meeting.
So we really haven't had an opportunity for any ongoing. I think we basically just did a, you know, training and formation, and everything's been scant because of COVID, so we're really starting fresh. And I believe Brick wasn't the City Manager when we had our two initial meetings, so we've had, and Lupe's new. We've had a lot of turnover, and I assume Mr. Mendez replaced Donna Breeze?
Yeah, and that's a great point, Madam Chair. The, you know, the turnover of two council members means that we have to have two nominations, and that took a significant amount of time, and the training, coordination of the training and those type of things really, I guess, extended that timeline by which we would have a quorum and everybody on board, ready to go. So, you know, that's something we're going to, and we have another election coming up, and there's potential for new council members and new appointees. But, you know, with that lesson learned, we're going to put some emphasis on how we accelerate that, should council members be replaced, and obviously, there are appointees replaced.
Okay, and I do like that you've put in the accounting system, a coding, a project coding, so that when we look at the accounting reports, we know what's tied and matched, basically, and it looks like you're carrying forward the excess that wasn't budgeted into next year to fund more projects next year, so that looks like a good thing. But again, Mr. Connors, this is the first actual operating meeting that we've had, because it's been such a long time. We basically only did training, so I really don't even know, except for following the agenda, you know, what we're gonna be doing going forward. You're, you're gonna have to lead us.
Oh, yes, of course.
And are we able to go over the expenditures and go and just kind of talk about, you know, Measure U projects and progress, the things that have already been done? Because it was my understanding that we were going to be a part of that process before things were done, you know? You were gonna, and so things have changed, like Don said.
Yeah, there's, I mean, the only distinction is that this is an oversight committee. You're just validating that the funds are used according to the commitments that were made, specific to the resolution. The actual, the project status and those type of things are not necessarily within the purview of the Oversight Committee. It's more that, that they're using appropriately for the right things. Generally speaking, though, I can and will comment on the status of those projects as, as they're being executed, because we do, especially the capital projects, a lot of, you know, a lot of the items that were coded are personnel, additional employees, that, and so, I mean, there's not really much to report, and so on the capital projects, we can certainly do that.
Can I ask a question? So, in terms of our meetings going forward, I wasn't really clear what you said. My understanding, our mandate is to meet every three months and do a yearly report on our findings to the council. Is that what we're gonna stick with?
That would be the base agenda. Quarterly meetings, HDL tax revenue review and forecasting. And while we have Mr. Plumley, he'll be our HDL representative, will be participating in those meetings as well. So we can also provide perspective on what other cities do in terms of their Oversight Committee meetings, and we can expand or contract our agendas based on some input from other supported agencies that the HDL is involved with. So this is, this is not a set thing. As a group, we can, we can define the meetings that we have forward and the agendas, and then continue to modify until it achieves your expectations within the, within the scope of the responsibilities of this committee.
So, Mr. Connor, I would like to comment, when Mr. Butler was the City Manager and this committee was formed, he had said that we would be able to speak in front of the City Council, you know, as an advisory committee. I know our recommendations aren't binding, but to be heard at the budget hearings? How, how would that fit in with your vision for our role going forward?
Yeah, in advisory and oversight, there's, there's, there's nothing that would prevent me from agendizing a Measure U report, whether it's by committee members or by staff.
We were discussing with Mr. Butler when this committee was formed originally, is that the Measure U members would be able to make a presentation if they like. Mr. Scrivner, do you recall that conversation as well, and Sharon?
Yes.
Yes, I recall. My understanding was that we were to meet quarterly, develop a report that was gonna be given to the council by the chairperson once a year. That was what I came out of that understanding.
Right. And because we're advisory, we would be allowed to, like, make a presentation at the budget kickoff hearings or whatever, so that when they're developing the budget, they could consider what we, as an advisory committee, recommend. That is, that is the way it was put forth to us initially, so I'm thinking.
Yeah, I have no, I have no issues with that approach or that. I have no notes that suggest that's what had been planned, but that definitely within, within the scope of this committee's responsibilities.
Sharon, is that your reflection also, Sharon?
Oh, yeah, I remember that, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so that was just what I wanted to make sure Mr. Connor knew going forward, because again, we really, because of COVID, we haven't really had a chance to have any kind of ongoing meeting. We basically just had formation meetings, and we wanted to convey to you, Mr. Connor, that that's what we were told would be our role, and I believe Sharon and Mr. Scrivner and myself, that's what we would like to do, at least for the first year. I don't recall, when are your budget hearings? Every March?
June? When do you do the budget? You, you okay it in end of July, right?
Right.
So, so our budget is a two-year budget, so those meetings occurred in July and August of this year past. But we do, we do quarterly updates, so there's nothing necessarily wrong with agendizing the committee's, you know, report out of a quarterly meeting. I, I do think, though, that, you know, it's almost like watching paint dry, and, and we will give quarterly updates on, in terms of financial performance, revenue to expense, then transfers, and it, it is fitting to sequence that with any report that the committee would like to, to inject into that process.
Right, so we, we would be allowed to maybe make a presentation and agendize it, and possibly recommend to the council mid-year or mid-annual budget adjustments based on our input, you know? You detailed the projects generally here, and the positions, your mostly funding positions, and you're correct that not too much in capital projects and such, mostly police department positions, so. But that's, the purpose is, is what the city's doing in concert with what the Citizens Oversight Committee had envisioned, and it is, by and large, I would say, but I, I know that Sharon and David Scrivner, we would like to, forming members, have a chance to make input.
Excuse me, committee members, I'm gonna have to interject and insist that we follow the agenda. This is a Brown Act committee, and we're obligated to follow the Brown Act. Right now, we are in general public comments, we have not reached presentations, there is no opportunity for discussion. The discussions that are currently taking place would probably be most appropriate under Agenda Item 2 during the review of the materials actually presented to you. I'm just trying to avoid us being guilty of a misdemeanor and receiving a Brown Act letter.
Okay.
Not get a Brown Act letter.
All right.
If you need to.
So are we ready, then, for the HDS presentation, and then, then we'll further our discussion regarding expenditures and revenue when we get to the next item, okay? So. Are we ready for HDS to, the presentation, or?
Let's go.
Brett, do you wanna start sharing your screen?
Sure, I will do that. I just wanna, just quickly introduce myself, and I do that in the presentation as well, but I met three of you, ironically, about a year and a half ago. I participated, or I went with Lloyd Delamas, and he made a presentation to your Oversight Committee, and I've been with HDL a little more than two years now, so here I am, full circle back, and meeting with all of you again, and new members as well, and new City Manager, new Finance Director, and I'm happy that I can participate and share information with you today. So let me share my screen and bring up the PowerPoint. Can you see that, everyone see that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Do it as a slideshow, okay, here we go. So this is the, we're presenting to, and I understand this is the Measure U Oversight Committee, and I have information included to give you today on historical information on Measure W, because it's, it's related, very related, and we will go through that, and I'll take any questions that you have as we go through the presentation. And I'm Brett Plumley, and I've been, worked in the, previously worked in the public sector for over 35 years. I worked in seven different cities. I was City Manager, I retired two years ago, a little more than two years ago, city of Los Alamitos, I was City Manager there for six years. I was City Manager in La Quinta before that for two and a half years. And I also worked in La Quinta, El Segundo, Rolling Hills Estates, also La Mirada, and Costa Mason. So I have always been on the client side of cities, working with HDL, as you are doing now, I'm on this side as a consultant. So I always wanted to go work with HDL at the tail end of my municipal career, and fortunately, I'm able to do that, and I'm here, and I, and I get to meet with 40-plus cities every single quarter. Port Huaynimi is one of my cities, and it's really a fun job that I have, and I learn a lot from all of the cities, and I'm happy to be able to share what I've learned over the years as well. So we're, HDL has been in existence now for more than 37 years, and just to highlight, we, we're proud that we have been able to maintain a 99% client retention, and we have more than 500 municipal clients at this point in time. Lloyd Delamas, I met with you, and when I was there about a year and a half, it's, it's actually more like two years, it was right before the pandemic began, and Lloyd, actually, along with Bob Henderleiter, founded the company, so Lloyd Delamas is definitely one of the keystones of the company. Now, just to get into the data here, this is your sales tax breakdown, and in Port Huaynimi, your sales tax rate is eight and three quarters percent, and you can see here, included is the state's portion, the county's portions, and then you'll both, your Bradley Burns, you receive 1% of all of the sales tax that's generated in your city, and you have the two measures, the transaction and use tax measures, Measures W that was implemented first, that was implemented all the way back in fiscal year 2008, 2009, and then your Measure U, most recent measure, that started back in fiscal year 1819 at 1%. So you have a total of 1.5% that is being collected under behalf in transaction and use tax. And what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna go through the slides here and just educate the committee on what consists of transaction and use tax, how it came about, and how it is divided, basically, and recorded in Port Huaynimi. So the, this slide just shows that the number of TUT districts throughout the state of California have continued to grow, and you can see back in 2013, 177, all the way to 406 through November 2020, that's the historical information that we have in this particular slide. The highlight is that 95% of the state's population lives in one or more of the transaction and use tax districts. And so when people ask the question, and you may have questions about, is there a competitive disadvantage for having a transaction and use tax? In your case, you have two, and I would say primarily, no, there's not. I have a slide coming up here to talk about that, but because, as you can see, 95% of the state's population live in one or more districts, there's really not a competitive disadvantage. It may have been more of an issue early on, early implementation back 2012, 2013, but it's really no longer an issue. The who and where, there's more than half of the counties throughout the state of California are in a transaction and use tax, and almost half of all of the cities also are in that. Northern California are more districts than in central and southern California, but the point is, this is to supplement that last slide, that most of either cities or counties are in one or more transaction and use tax districts. This is the particular, the Revenue Taxation Code, Section 7251, that allows the implementation of a transaction and use tax, and it's been called a district tax or an add-on tax, you often hear those terms thrown out there, but mainly, we're talking about transaction and use tax. And then just talk about functional differences. When you compare the 1% sales tax that Port Huaynimi, that you receive from people that shop within the city boundaries, you're getting a 1% of all of the sales tax that's generated. And then additionally, you are receiving the transaction and use tax, which is both Measures W and Measure U on various different types of purchases. And I'm gonna go through and try to demonstrate some examples of how the different purchases are calculated, and how Port Huaynimi, how you receive these dollars. But as I was talking, I've talked with, with Brick and with Lupe about this, the real story in Port Huaynimi is a lot of, on the sales tax end and on the transaction use tax end, a lot is cannabis-related, a very high percentage of all of the sales and use tax that's generated is coming from that one source. And the other key piece of the story is, a lot of your transaction and use tax is imported from cities surrounding Port Huaynimi. So you're more of the, you know, the mom-and-pop type stores, where the retail stores get categorized as general consumer goods, you're collecting sales tax, you get the 1% from the sales tax generated within your city, and then additionally, you're receiving transaction and use tax on both Measure U and Measure W from outside of the city. So you have some pretty big cities surrounding you, and your residents are shopping there, and you're benefiting from the transaction and use tax that you received, 1.5%. When we're, when we're looking at the seven different major industry groups, and that's how we at HDL analyze and forecast your sales tax and your transaction and use tax, the main differences to highlight here between the Bradley Burns and other types of retailers, you get primarily one-for-one transaction tax, one equal to your Bradley Burns, that 1% you receive, from grocery stores, from restaurants, and from gas stations, you're primarily, it's a one-for-one. Where you're receiving more than 100% are in the different sectors and industry groups like autos and transportation, general consumer goods, business and industry, and you're getting some dollars also from petroleum-type products. So that's the highlight here, and then to give you some specific examples, the, this example here, we're talking about automobiles, so you don't have auto dealers in the city of Port Huaynimi, you're not receiving sales tax from auto sales, but what you are doing in this particular example is, the buyer, you go out and purchase a vehicle, and you live, if you live in a city that does not have a transaction and use tax, and that particular city has a total sales tax rate of eight and three quarters percent, that buyer is paying only the seven and a quarter percent, because there is no transaction and use tax. And so wherever that particular consumer buys that vehicle, within that city, that city will receive the 1% Bradley Burns portion. In the next example, which is really the example that is pertinent to Port Huaynimi, the buyer lives in a city that does have a transaction and use tax, like in Port Huaynimi, you have Measure W with the half percent, you have Measure U with the 1%, so it's a total of 1.5%. So you have a resident that lives in Port Huaynimi, and they go and purchase a vehicle in a surrounding city that has an auto dealer, that particular city will get the Bradley Burns portion, they will get the 1% sales tax, and Port Huaynimi will get the 1.5% transaction and use tax. So it's based on where the vehicle is registered, and in this case, if it's registered and purchased by a resident in Port Huaynimi, you receive the 1.5% transaction and use tax. This example is on deliveries, and the different types of purchases that I highlight here, building supplies, equipment, and bulk fuel, and these are primarily being imported into your city. This is an example of, you do not have a real high percentage of sales tax dollars that you are receiving in these types of purchases, from building supplies, equipment, and bulk fuel. So if the product gets delivered into the city of Port Huaynimi, then you are collecting the transaction and use tax, and if it's outside the city, there is no transaction and use tax, and that's what this is designed to highlight for those types of purchases made. And this one, what I wanna highlight here is online sales, and just keeping in mind that there are, where the tax is collected for Amazon and businesses like eBay and Facebook, Wayfair, the transaction and use tax is going directly to Port Huaynimi. So if your resident is making an online purchase, you're receiving directly the transaction and use tax from those particular purchases that are made. So you're significantly benefiting, especially in general consumer goods, when we're talking about online sales that are being purchased, you're getting that 1.5%, and that is because of the, the two transaction and use tax measures that you have with the W and U. And this one just shows how much, in terms of Measure W, and I know the Oversight Committee's measured you, but this is definitely related, because it's half a percent, and Measure U is 1%. So when we're talking about historical information that has been generated by Measure W, it's very applicable to Measure U, you're basically taking half of that, the patterns are the same. And here, we can see Measure W going all the way back to fiscal year 0809, a 13-year history, and how significant this particular revenue source has grown up to this. and how significant this particular revenue source has grown up to this point in fiscal year 2021. You're over 1.6 million in measure W dollars. And, and the pattern, like I said, with measure U is half of that, but it's only over the past nine quarters that measure U has been in existence. So we break this out further. Here are the major industry groups. And here you can see on the left side, these are all the measure, the major industry groups that we at HDL analyze on your behalf, on behalf of all the clients that we have in cities and counties, and in terms of transaction and use tax in this case. So food and drugs in Port Huaynimi is by far, I mentioned, way up at the top. And that is the industry that contains its grocery stores, drugstores, and cannabis-related businesses. And because that particular business type in your city is generating such a high percentage of all of the sales tax, you're also benefiting on the transaction and use tax. Mainly, it's, it's a one-for-one. All the dollars that you receive on the Bradley Burns side, that 1%, you're receiving an equal amount to measure U because that's 1% and getting half of that in measure W. So you can see at the top of the list here, the two major industry groups are basically tied through fiscal year 2021 are food and drugs because of the cannabis businesses, and then general consumer goods. And general consumer goods is so solid because of a combination, I mentioned, that you're importing dollars from your residents making purchases outside of the city of Port Huaynimi, and you're receiving from the online sales that are made in that particular sector, the transaction and use tax. And that growth, as you can see the chart here, both in terms of really strong growth in food and drugs, starting back in fiscal year 17, 18. And that's because the cannabis programs were implemented in your city at that time. So that is the really steep incline at that point. And then general consumer goods, really almost equally strong incline that took place starting at the end primarily of calendar year 2019. And that's when there was a Wayfair decision and AB 147 was the legislation that implemented the Wayfair decision. And cities began collecting use tax and sales tax on out-of-state retailers and third-party retailers, and that was AB 147. So that's really accounting for a permanent growth and both in the pool dollars that you receive, but also in transaction and use tax dollars that you're receiving right here. So the two are right up at the top of the list, your food and drugs and general consumer goods, and really driving the overall story when we're talking about sales tax and transaction tax. Here, just a further drill down. So we look at the seven major industry groups in the previous slide. And this is all, these are all of the business types within Port Huaynimi. And this is measure W, the half percent, and a 13-year trend. And there's the cannabis that I mentioned, began in 2017 with that huge growth since that fiscal year 17, 18. And then with the, I also mentioned the Wayfair decision is the other party responsible for the significant increase, especially in your general merchandise, which is within your general consumer goods category, and really strong growth that took place. And that took, started at the end of calendar year 2019. And these trends are, you'll see in a moment, the next few slides are very comparable when we start looking at measure U. So here, measure U, it's, it's really, it becomes easier to tell the story and compare to the Bradley Burns because you are receiving a 1%, and that's equal to the Bradley Burns amount. So you get 1% on the Bradley Burns and sales tax, and you get 1% from measure U, and that is equal amounts. And so what we can see at the top, we have the nine-quarter history going all the way back to the second quarter of 19. And the same pattern that I just showed you with measure W can be seen with measure U, with food and drugs and general consumer goods, right up at the top. Food and drugs, you're receiving basically one-for-one. You get 1% of the Bradley Burns. You get an equal amount with the food and drugs. Restaurants and hotels, which is this green line here, you're also getting a one-for-one. So it's not only your residents, but anyone else that comes into Port Huaynimi. They eat at your restaurant. That particular consumer is going to pay the 1% for the Bradley Burns. So you're going to receive that 1% on the sales tax, and you're going to get the one and a half percent in transaction and use tax. And when we look specifically at measure U, which is your Oversight Committee, that's really one-for-one. It's 1% Bradley Burns, it's 1% measure U, equal amounts for the restaurants, equal amounts for the food and drugs. And most of the other business, major industry groups are imported in. So you're getting a significantly higher percentage in transaction use tax in most of the major industry groups than you are on the Bradley Burns. So this is, in, in the case of Port Huaynimi, a really significant benefit from having that transaction and use tax because in most cases, you're significantly more than 100% of your Bradley Burns amount. This is the drill down further. I showed you the drill down for measure W. And now, we want, I wanted to put the same thing out here for measure U, even though it's a shorter history. So the, the chart, the patterns look the same. It's just a shorter history. So it only goes back nine quarters to the second quarter of 19. But the story is the same. Up here, you know, cannabis way up at the top. And again, that's the same amount that we were looking at for the, on the sales tax side. You're receiving the same amount of the 1% coming from Bradley Burns as you are the 1% measure U. And it's cannabis started in 2017, and then the Wayfair decision, which had the Marketplace Facilitators Act and the collection of transaction tax and, and use tax from out-of-state retailers and third-party retailers that began back in, at the end of 2019. And that pattern is the same as it is for measure W. So here, this, this one demonstrates, I'm talking about the one-for-one. And here you can really see it. And there's the food and drugs, which is your top sector. And you're getting exactly the same amount in 1% Bradley Burns as you are from measure U. And the same thing you can see here with restaurants and hotels. It's a one-for-one. And this one, I like this chart because it just graphically shows you the picture of how significant the import is, in your case, from what you're receiving outside of the city of Port Huaynimi. In general consumer goods, it's really highlighted here. So you're, you know, there's your Bradley Burns portion, and your general consumer goods is more than double what's coming in from outside, both outside Port Huaynimi and from online sales. That, those two factors are contributing to that significant difference. And the same story can be told for business and industry sector, and especially for autos and transportation. And that is because, you know, I mentioned, you don't have the auto dealers in your city, and they're all outside of your city. And you are receiving the transaction and use tax, one and a half percent. Every time one of your residents purchases a vehicle outside of Port Huaynimi, you're getting the transaction and use tax dollars. That's based on where those vehicles are registered. The fuel and service stations, this, you get some dollars from petroleum-type products, which are outside of the city of Port Huaynimi. And that's why that's not a straight one-for-one. And then building and construction, again, is a sector where you're importing a significant number of dollars coming into the city from outside of the city. So it's really an interesting story that can be told, but I, I really like to focus in on the two parts. Cannabis really significantly driving the story in terms of the sales tax and the transaction tax that's generated, and then significant amount of dollars being imported in from outside. That's really what this is all about, and that really is what helps you understand how that, how those dollars are received on the measure U. I'll, I'll just, I'll pause for a moment. You guys, anybody can interrupt me anytime. You know, I've been talking the whole time. But, um, does anyone have any questions right now? And I can just, I can go through the rest of the slides and we take questions at the end as well.
Yeah, I have a question. David Scrivener, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. So if I go to Camarillo and buy a two-by-four, drag it back home again, basically somewhere along the, somebody figures out to charge me a percent and a half on that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. Okay.
I noticed on some of the, um, uh, slides that you had underneath, like if we want to go back, it would say count, count set, yeah, like count 16, count 94. What does that mean?
Uh, tho- those are the number of, um, businesses in that particular, in this case, that, that business type. So the number of businesses. It's generated, we get the data, we at HDL, we get the data from the CD TFA, California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, and that's how they account for it. They track it by business type, they track it within the business type within a major industry group. And that's the, the count is coming from that data.
Thank you.
Okay, sure. And this one is, I talked about this already, but we just, in terms of, do, the question does come up. It used to come up more often. I mean, I know it came up when I was city manager in Los Alamos. And at the time, that city, we were considering whether or not to recommend putting an item on the ballot for a transaction and use tax. And, and council members and, and public, they would ask the question, is there an impact? Is there a competitive disadvantage for having a transaction and use tax? And maybe the city next door not having one. And we have not seen it. I mean, there, there, there's a slight impact, but really think it's too small to measure that. And I mean, consumers go out, they're, they're mostly focusing in on that base cost. They're not so much thinking about maybe that additional half percent or 1%. And the, the hassle, I put the hassle factor there. It's just, it's, they're not typically going to make a decision on whether to purchase that item based on whether that city has a transaction and use tax or not. So I just want to, I want to highlight that in case you're thinking about that question or that question comes up with staff as well. And then in terms of trends, we put this one in here. I, I, I like to show the really dramatic difference and growth, in this case, from online sales compared to brick-and-mortar retail. And you, you hear about, you read about, brick-and-mortar retail fading away and online sales taking over. And in, in some respect, this demonstrates that. But what is happening is brick-and-mortar stores, which are included in the general consumer goods sector, those, I think, that are the most successful reinvent themselves and they become, what the pattern has been, the trend has become smaller footprints of stores, more entertainment-related, more things to do to interest the consumer. And that very well will help that particular sector grow in the future, but not as much as online sales. So eight years passed, and we're looking at that time period from 2012 to 2020. You can see brick-and-mortar dropped by almost 3%. And that same time period, online sales grew by more than 450%. So it's just incredible booming growth from online sales. Combination of factors, consumers have changed their habits. And during the pandemic, especially with shelter in place and people being home, that was contributing even more. There was a significant spike in online sales because all of us stayed home and looked around our houses and bought things. I included, I included in that category. And so that definitely contributed. But primarily, as we highlight here, in terms of the Marketplace Facilitators Act, AB 147 is really the primary factor that has permanently contributed in online growth and the use tax dollars that are being captured now. And so we're still at HDL, our long-term forecast for pool dollars growing is 8% all the way out to fiscal year 26, 27. And that's as we're coming out of the pandemic, post-pandemic quarters, permanent growth in the pools. So online sales, we, if we continue this trend, and when we continue this trend outside of this calendar year 2020, we're going to continue to see online sales growing more than the brick-and-mortar. And the, the biggest sector within brick-and-mortar that I've talked about a lot today, your general consumer goods, our long-term forecast is only a one and a half percent growth. So as we go out into the future, general consumer goods, fiscal year 25, 26, 26, 27, we have built into our forecast a one and a half percent statewide growth. We, we fine-tune it as we do, and Brick mentioned, we do quarterly updates. So we're working with your staff and we work with city manager, finance director. And we find out anecdotally, we study, we learn the history, we know what's happening in your city. And I learned the most from the staff in terms of what's happening, and, and your staff has been great in educating me. So we take the forecast statewide and we fine-tune it to Port Huaynimi, and we build our long-term forecast on that. In, in your case, general consumer goods is way up, um, one of the highest-producing sectors, but food and drugs is by far all the way up at the top. When we're looking at percentages, and, and Brick mentioned, we analyze this data. We get the quarterly data from CD TFA, and it's one quarter back. So the most recent meeting that we just had with Port Huaynimi staff, we're looking at second quarter data. But in the second quarter of '21, we're looking at the percentage on the, on the Bradley Burns side, and it's very comparable on the transaction and use tax side. Food and drugs generated almost 40% of all of the sales tax. And within food and drugs, it's the cannabis-related businesses that are driving that. So that's, I, I keep going back to that big part of the story. But the second biggest sector in Port Huaynimi is restaurants and hotels. And that's, that generated about a fifth of all of the sales tax in the quarter. So it also is a very significant contributor to the sales tax and the transaction and use tax base in Port Huaynimi. And that's the way we analyze it. We start at the state level. We look at all the major industry groups that I've shown you today. We look at all the business types within those major industry groups. And then we drill down to your particular city. We find out what's happening, and we tell the story. You want to be able to tell the story of the biggest percentage that's being generated. So that's the presentation that I have and the overview that I have on your transaction use tax, measure U, measure W. And I'll take any other questions that you might have right now.
I have, I, you know, it was interesting, when we first started this, I don't know, Don, when we first started this, we were always talking about the 1%. We never thought about the measure, uh, measure W and measure U together, forming them together. This is the first time I'd heard about that. So that was really interesting to me, that finally the city's got such a great tax base, and it all has to do with dispensaries, I think. You know, I, I often said, we don't, we don't have any automobiles, we don't have any, we're not like Ventura or Camarillo auctionard, so the cannabis dispensaries is what brought us up out of the red and into the black, which is amazing.
Yeah, and I know what you're, I know what city manager, finance director, and they're on it in terms of analyzing and tracking that particular industry. Because you, we've seen during the COVID time period, it coincided with It coincided with an overall growth in that industry. Cannabis already was starting to grow and, and come online. Right about the time when Port Huaynimi would implemented its program back in two thousand seventeen and even two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. Prior to COVID, beginning back in March of two thousand twenty. And then what happened during COVID is businesses like wine-type businesses, liquor. Cannabis-related businesses all did really well. So there was some, somewhat of a spike. But also, it looks like, and I know your staff is talking, we have an entire cannabis division. So in terms of looking at stability in that industry for the future, we're looking at that, we're working with your staff. And that will factor into the forecast as we go forward. But you're right, it's, it's definitely a significant part. It's both on the sales tax and, and on the transaction and use tax side.
Yeah, absolutely. That's great news. Thank you for the presentation. That was very interesting. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. We'll all stop sharing. Okay. And I'll hand it back to, to the chair.
Okay, so if there's any more questions from the members, committee members, going once, twice. I guess you need to vote on the receiving and filing your presentation. Let's start here. We have Diaz Conti is absent. Mendez. Do you approve to receive and file the report?
Yes, I do approve.
Thank you. Clarice?
I approve.
Scrivener?
Yes.
Taylor? Yes. Okay, so we're ready for business item number two. One, receive and file fiscal year two thousand twenty audited schedule of sources and uses. That was on page, let's see.
I'll share my screen so I can put it up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it page three of five that we received in our package? That's the audited one?
It's the audited one, correct.
And uh, my only comment is, I don't see where that indicates that it's audited. Is that from your CAFER?
So this is a, correct, this is a schedule that's included in the CAFER for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth of two thousand twenty.
Okay.
Right. And so just, I wanted to comment on that. This is one of the schedules that the auditors included. Um, and they're gonna continue to do that going forward.
So we could look at your CAFER online and verify that it's exactly, you know, the audited financials.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And then I just wanted to mention that, um, the, the opinion that we received for this specific year of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Was an unqualified opinion. So what that means is that the independent auditors, uh, in their judgment, the city's financial statements are fairly. And appropriately represented. So they, they got a clean opinion, if you will.
Thank you.
Can you repeat that?
Yes, of course. An unqualified opinion, it's what we call a clean opinion. So in the auditor's judgment, um, they, um, the city's financial statements are fairly. And appropriately represented.
So they didn't accept basically what the city presented, is that what you're saying?
No, no, no. It's, it's a non, it's called an unqualified opinion, but it's a, it's a good opinion.
Okay.
Opinion, yes.
Mr. Scrivener, it's, it sounds the exact opposite of what it's supposed to communicate.
It means they had no issues when they did the audit. And it was a full audit, transaction testing. This, this schedule is part of your comprehensive audit of your citywide financials, correct?
Okay, so this, this is good to go then.
Yeah.
I, I have one question regarding it. It says, uh, this is from measure U. Was any measure W implemented to any of these, uh, revenue, any of this revenue? Or is it just strictly measure U?
No, this is strictly measure U. The measure W would be in a separate, uh, it would be in the, in the income statement. In the CAFER report. It would be part of the revenue, as is measure W. So all of the revenue is included in the CAFER. But the measure U is the only one that has a separate schedule.
So you specifically called out measure U as a separate schedule and that you derive that data from coding. Coding your revenue to measure you so you can make a standalone display.
Correct.
The other, other, um, measure W and Prop one seventy-two and all that, that's embedded in your general revenue. And it's not, doesn't have a separate schedule, is what you're saying.
It doesn't have a, a separate schedule. Correct.
Madam Chair, this is the city manager. Could, could I, um, uh, ask or indulge you to allow the city attorney? To, to put the scope, um, specific to measure you in this committee, just so that, for new members, um, especially so that we understand. What, what the, uh, the mission of this committee is.
Sure. Uh, so I'm Kevin Spalding. I'm the city attorney. And, uh, we've discussed this, albeit it seems like several years ago now, regarding what the scope of this committee is. This committee was created in the measure U ordinance, the transactions and use tax ordinance that was approved by the voters. Incident to the creation of this committee, the rules defining it were, were put forth in resolution. Forty-two fifty-seven. And section ten of resolution forty-two fifty-seven states that the scope and duties of the committee. Are as follows. It says, review revenue and expenditure reports prepared by staff as they relate to the receipt and use of transaction and use tax revenue. Review the independent audit required by section fifty-six fourteen of the ordinance and prepare a report of its findings for the council. Review and consider reports from the city manager and finance director on operational impact citywide. Review economic trends generally. Provide an annual report to the council on the revenue expenditure history for the prior biennial budget period. Including how expenditures align with priorities set by the city manager under the authority of and in keeping with annually established goals of the council. And review staff recommendations to the council on future uses of funds based on revenue and expenditure reports and economic trends. So while I think it's important to understand how measure W, uh, works with respect to, to measure you and whatnot. This committee's assignment is really only to look at past expenditures of measure you. And prepare guidance on, to the council or report to the council as to whether or not the city has. Lived up to its representations as to how it would like, how it intended to spend the money. That being said, there's been some discussion earlier on at the creation of this committee. On the distinction between a general tax and a special tax. It's important to recognize that measure you is a general tax. That means that that money can be put to any legal municipal purpose. It is not earmarked for any purposes. Even though the ordinance itself called out that there were a series of, of priorities. That the council had intended to address during that. So anything that this committee says. Or reviews in, in an advisory nature, or says that we fit or didn't fit within the, the allotted priorities. That's pretty much the end of any authority and whatnot. The council is free to do whatever they choose to with this money. And it's simply to look back on past spending and potentially recommend future projects that this committee thinks that the council should be aware of. For measure you expenditures.
So, um, Lupe, uh, so measure you is in part of the general purpose revenue. Uh, on the CAFER?
Correct.
Okay.
It's part of the general fund revenue.
And, and it's category in presentation on your financial statements as general purpose taxes. The accounting presentation that aligns with Mr. Spalding's legal discussion of it. I know, uh, HDS talked about, um, measure, measure W and all that. Because it all, all has the same trend analysis, because it's all embedded in the general ledger and your general purpose revenue. And so. That's, that's how the financials that we're looking at align with what Mr. Spalding said. Is that correct? Can you clarify that for everybody? So we understand why we're, how we're looking at these reports and how you extracted measure you out of the total revenue of the city. I think that would be helpful to the committee members.
Right. So the measure you revenue is part of our general fund revenue. And then we have the schedule where we, um, the schedule of sources and uses of funds specifically for measure you. Just to identify those expenditures, um, that we spend with those dollars. Uh, but it's a schedule, it's a separate schedule, it's a supplemental schedule in the financial statement. So it's not part of the financial statements. It's a supplemental schedule. So it's towards the end of the CAFER.
Thank you.
So the, the bottom line, as I understand it, is we're tasked to review how the money was spent. And report that to the council, but we have no mandate or ability to direct how the money should be spent. It's something to say, uh, here's what the ordinance said, here's where the money went. Um, it went to the right place or the wrong place, pass it on to the council, and then we're done. We don't have any, uh, a power to do anything other than report whether they're sticking with what was promised.
Essentially, that's correct, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Spalding, can you clarify too, as an advisory committee though, um, what is the difference of reviewing and basically blessing? What the city council and the city, city staff did? Um, does an advisory committee have the. Allowance to say as citizens and part of this committee, we would like to see X? I mean, what?
Absolutely. I, in the annual report and, and the last of the scopes and duties as, as contained in resolution, uh, I think it's fifty, forty-two fifty-seven. The council, the committee based on analysis of future trends and how the city has spent money in the past. May make future recommendations to the council. They, they won't have any more weight other than as a recommendation. But it's within your authority to make such a recommendation.
Yes, okay. And we just, it's a new committee, we haven't really had that opportunity yet. But going forward, we will be able to.
Right, right. And my understanding too was, one of the reasons this is slow to get going is because. Uh, and the, the member from HDL can probably attest to this. Is it takes a while to develop any of the, any of the income or revenue streams and see what exactly measure you has done. And for a, a significant period of time, I mean, once that, once measure you passed, we had approximately. I think it was four to seven months before CD TFA even collected any taxes, let alone could we see where they went. Or how they were acquired and whatnot. So there was a bit of a year, there's approximately nine months to a year lag time before we had any data to share.
Yeah, that's correct. It, it, uh, initial implementation of the measure takes time to get the data together. And recorded from CD TFA. And so, um, there is that delay. And then in this case, it, and what I've, what I've seen is, um, cities with long-term measures. Transaction and use tax measures over time in several years. You see a very comparable pattern in all of the different major industry groups. The spending patterns are very comparable. But this one, not only is it relatively new, going back only nine quarters, but you had COVID happening during the same time period. So there's definitely a benefit to, I think, having waited to now having this snapshot in time. It's a good time period for your committee to reconvene, I think.
I have a question about our recommendations, and this is, uh, Mr. Spalding. I, I believe last month, a thing came up in front of the city council where, um, they were trying to figure out who lived far enough away to vote on anything. Uh, from a proposal that was going down. Um, my concern is, is that, um, many of us live close to. Parks and recreation, um, areas and things like that. And I, I guess I need to know what we're able to comment on, uh, in our official capacity in terms of recommendations.
Right, you're feeling, you're referring to the real property materiality standard, political reform act regulations. Um, and did you receive my email response to you yesterday, I believe?
Uh, I didn't get it. I, I know I sent something in to Christie to send to you, because I couldn't find the contact information. So I didn't get that.
Okay, I had responded to you yesterday afternoon. Let me know if you received that. I can put something together for the rest of the committee. But given the fact that this is an advisory committee and the types of things that this committee is going to be discussing. It's very unlikely we're going to encounter that specific political reform act prohibition. It, essentially the real property, uh, material interest standards and whatnot apply whenever you're making a decision that would change the nature, character. Or market value of the official's parcel. Or affect a property i- in close proximity to that parcel. So where we really start to see this is we see this in like. Rezoning and whatnot, where i- it might increase the economic benefit of the official's parcel. If let's say it could be, you know, an ADU could be built on it and, and increase its rental value. Things, things of that nature, or, or change in, um. Uh, change in parking rules, uh, things that we're looking for that would actually change the, the, the value of the property. Or its value to a developer. Given the fact that much of what measure you is focused on is broad, kind of citywide measures. The likelihood that we're talking about something so specific that it would have any measurable effect on an official's, on an official's property value. To rise to the level of a material conflict of interest is, is unlikely. Um, however, it is possible. Miranda Park comes to mind, because that seems to be a, a very. Highly debated area within the city. Same with Volker. It's entirely possible this committee could, could have discussions and make recommendations that are very specific to, let's say, Volker or Miranda. If that were the case, uh, committee members who live less than five hundred feet. And potentially even less than a thousand feet from that park could have to consider recusing themselves based on the nature of what's being suggested. But considering measure you is simply rubber, this committee is, is to some extent just rubber stamping past decisions. And making broad general recommendations for future use, i- it seems unlikely that we're gonna run into any of those materiality standards affecting real property.
And so for example, using that, I live next to Miranda Park and I have a property over next to Volker. So it, it sounds like if I was wanting to. Advocate for bathrooms at Volker Park or, you know, fixing the fields at Miranda Park, that's something I shouldn't do, right?
Right. That is something that you should not use your position to advocate for or against. That being said, nothing would prevent you from advocating for things that are generally applicable, like increased park amenities citywide.
Okay, got it. Okay, so I need to stay out of, uh, anything within five hundred feet of my home, okay? People live at the beach and it's like, uh, this gets tricky.
Right. And we also need to consider that the nature and quality of the action would have to be something that has a reasonably foreseeable effect on market value. Or the highest and best use of a property. So i- i- lighting or bathrooms, does a bathroom at Volker Park increase the market value of your house? Is it reasonably foreseeable? And, and the problem that we get into with the political reform act, and I'll, I'll give a couple of admonishments. One, a- as you can just see from me posing that question, it's very philosophical, it's very fact-based. Would a bathroom actually have any material effect on, on property values? Probably not. Would increased parking at Volker Park affect property values? Well, now you've got changes in traffic density, you've got changes in neighborhood. Maybe it would, maybe it would harm. And so the thing is, is that when we start looking at the, at the specific factual circumstances that surround a, a conflicts analysis. They get really fact-sensitive. The other thing that I have to caution you against is that there is a defense called, uh, you know, reliance upon advice of council. It's important to note that I represent the city and I represent this body as, as, as an organization within the city. I have zero attorney-client relationship with any of the members of this body or with individual council members. My goal, my, my, my allegiance is to a fictitious entity, as if it were a person. So what, what's, what's fascinating, what's fascinating under that is that you cannot rely on my advice. And the FPPC, the, the commission in charge of enforcing the political reform act, has specifically. has specifically said that reliance on the advice of attorney is not enough to warrant off a political reform act violation. So I can do my best and I can give you my thoughts on the matter, but you are not entitled to rely on.
Got it. Okay. I, I just need to stay out of all this then. Uh, the, the other que- the other question was, I know what, what happened with the city council thing was somebody got a map out and drew a circle around it and they could see whether they could vote on, on something. So I, I have no idea what 500 feet is, so.
I can, I can contact, Brad and I can discuss this offline and perhaps we can use the city's GIS system to create a radius map. We've done something similar with council members. Um, I, I'm sure we would be able to do something like that.
I think for all of us, that would be really helpful.
Then Brad and I'll communicate offline and, and see if we can provide that for you.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um, I have a question regarding the measure you general fund re- uh, revenue and expenditure report. Um, it looks like a lot of money was brought in over $3 million. Is that correct?
Point six million.
Are we moving to the next?
We're only looking at two, two dot one, which is, um, page three of your handout.
Madam Chair, City Manager, would it, uh, be okay if, um, Mrs. Ferro just went through the, uh, presented these documents and then, um, questions can be addressed. Uh, actress reviewed them and provided the details.
So she's going to go through to document one, two, and three, and then at the end we can vote on receiving and filing them and accepting them.
Yes, Madam Chair.
We've had an opportunity because they, yeah, because we need to understand what we're looking at. That would probably be helpful.
Okay. So here is, this is the, um, general fund revenue and expenditure report for fiscal year ending in June 30th of 2021. So now these numbers have not been audited just yet. Our audit is about to begin, uh, in the next couple of weeks. But what we have here for 2021, we ended the year with total revenue from measure U of $3,255,918. And then as, uh, was mentioned earlier, since we ended fiscal year 2020, beginning of 2021, we have established a project code to track the measure you expenditures. So you'll see that the, um, expenditures that are noted on here are a little bit more comprehensive in nature and the categories that are provided. And that's because we have a tracking mechanism to track specific projects. Um, if I can go through this public safety, the total public safety expenditures are $1,207,173. And then streets and maintenance category. And you can see the different projects. So now these are projects and all these numbers were derived from invoices that we have paid against these projects. Uh, the total streets and maintenance is $346,560. And the next category is parks and recreation. And again, these are the projects that we have worked on and these are the amounts that have been spent or that were spent, I should say, for fiscal year 2021. And those, uh, amount to $346,328.51, uh, under parks and recreation category. In total, total measure you expenditures are $1.9 million. And as we saw the revenue up above is, uh, 3.2 million. And so we have about 1.3, 1355, 1.3 million that, um, we have excess revenues over expenditures. And those, um, are going to be used. We have projects that we have not completed yet. And this will be my next slide here, my next, uh, report. So these are measure you projects that are in progress. And you can see the, um, public works. We have $25,000. Under police, we have a total of $270,000. And then parks and recreations, what, has quite a number of projects that are ongoing and that were carried over to this fiscal year. And that amounts to $874,000. And then the last category are facilities and maintenance. And, um, those projects amount to $186,856. So in total, the total of the projects will, uh, basically use up the funds that we have left over, uh, from the fiscal year that just ended. And again, we're tracking these projects, each one. You can see that the projects now have a project number. And they also have a project code of measure you. So we'll, we know exactly how much is being spent on each project.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, what is a CAD, C A D enterprise system? And, and a police, is that some software situation or you know what that is?
That's, uh, associated with the dispatch system, uh, computer aided dispatch. So it, um, um, it improves and creates interoperability between not only, um, internal, um, uh, police communications, but also external, especially with the Oxnard police. Uh, so this is a significant upgrade in our dispatching capability.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, and, and Madam Chair, City Manager Connors, if I may just, um, add one more comment associated with this particular batch of information. All the projects in here were a part of a, um, 2021, uh, CIP program. And, um, that program was under-executed for a lot of different reasons. So, um, all of these projects were moved uh, or carried forward into the current, current two-year budget. And that's why we've retained them as measure, uh, you expenditures.
So I have a question. If it's a two-year budget, the revenue is a two-year revenue or yearly revenue? Measure you, is that yearly or is that a two-year? Is that, if this is a two-year budget, is the revenue for two years or one year?
No, the revenue here is for one year. So this revenue is for fiscal year that ended in 20, June 2021, the 3.2.
So for one, okay. I find it interesting that, um, the, the, uh, reserves, um, are exactly the same amount of money as your ongoing projects.
Just rolled forward.
That was interesting. Yeah, how that just rolled out exactly. One mil, 355. Um, I have a question. I have a question regarding the funds that come into the city. Um, are they, uh, do you, is there ever any interest that's made on any of these funds that come into the city that you can fall back on? Or is it just this set of money and then it just stays that way? Or can you reinvest it to get interest on it? Uh, this is, I have no idea if this is something you can do.
Yeah, all these. All, all measure you goes into the general fund, um, and it's, um, I mean, the potential exists to put it in a treasury account, um, which has interest bearing capability. But most ones are, are part of working capital and so they're, they're, they're extremely liquid to buy down expenses. The comment about the, you know, the exact match, but that's because we don't, we're based on, when we do the budget um, development and assign expenses to measure you, we are using a forecast number. So if the, uh, for example, the forecast number that we're using was somewhere around $2.3 million, um, and it was, uh, it was three point, um, whatever it was, $3 million, which means we had to go back into our expenses and find, um, expenses in capital projects that met, um, the, the intent or the, um, the commitments represented in a resolution. And so this will occur, uh, every time we go through a cycle of, of measure you. And so the exact amount of measure you i- is not static. And so we do, we revisit, uh, each year and then we assign expenses to that amount. And that's why it came out exactly the same.
Good. That's awesome that the city is able to do all this. That's wonderful.
Any other questions?
No. Committee members, no more questions. Are we ready to, uh, vote on accepting these reports? Receive and file, et cetera? Anybody have any other questions?
Yeah, I would like to make one comment. Um, it, it seemed like in the prior year, the police department got 93% of the money, which seemed way out of balance. The second, uh, year looks much better to me. It is, it's, uh, we're doing a lot of projects that are in different areas other than the police department. And I, I support the police department just in the, the first one. All, all the money went in one place. Uh, now it looks like it's being spread out better, which is, I think, better.
Yeah. And part of the reason is because we didn't have a project code to identify those expenditures. So I'm sure there were expenses in the prior year related to measure you, but we didn't have a specific project code. So the way that the expenses were allocated were different. Yes.
And Madam Chair, City Manager, if I could just add a little bit more commentary to it. Um, we took a, a, uh, an emphasis and effort in the lead end, uh, of budgeting to identify those expenses and allocate those around those five categories, uh, that, um, are, uh, included in the, the resolution so that we can distribute those, um, and account for those, uh, in a way that lives up to the expectation that we've represented in our resolution. So this is now by design going into budget build that we, um, we, we are allocating um, as close as we can, um, to multiple, uh, elements um, in our expenses, uh, in the, in the budget and, uh, allocated in alignment with the resolution.
Uh, I have a question regarding the playground hardware and fiber fall. Does anybody know what that is all about? That's under parks and recreation for $15,000.
I'm sorry, Sharon, can you, uh, ask that question one more time?
Yeah, uh, under parks and recreation, you have playground hardware and fiber fall for $15,393. Just I have, what, what, what was that? Uh, playground equipment, um, just curious to what it was.
Yeah, it's both replacement parts in the playground equipment and then the fiber falls as a reference to the surfacing material that gets replaced annually, uh, underneath to, for fall protection.
I see. That's what, okay, cool. Good. Beautiful. Thank you. I move that we accept.
Are we ready for the roll call vote? Any more questions?
I, I hear, I hear a motion from, uh, from one of the members. Is there a second?
I second it. David Scribner second.
I agree as well.
Do a roll call vote. So Member Diaz-Canté is still, uh, absent for the record. Uh, Member Mendez.
I accept it.
Uh, Member Clarice.
Accept it.
Vice Chair Scribner.
Yes.
And Chair Taylor.
Accepted.
Motion passes unanimously.
Perfect. Great. Well, I for one, I'm very excited that we finally got together. Um, looking forward to continuing this with everybody. Um, are we going to schedule our next meeting or are we going to wait till the beginning of the year? What do you think, Don?
I, I defer to the city manager and, uh, the finance committee person, uh, chair because I'm not sure what the city's timetable going forward. I know Mr. Connor said we were going to meet quarterly. It would probably be nice to schedule it now, but.
What I can do is I can send some dates. I'll coordinate with HDL and I can schedule dates after we have the presentation from HDL so that it coincides with the, the press. So we have the fin- the information from them and I can send a couple of dates, um, to all of you, if that works.
If I, if I, if I may, Madam Chair, um, um, we do an annual master calendar for council meetings. Um, we'll also do one for city advisory commissions that we have hard dates every quarter, um, as well as measure you. So those dates, um, will be part of a package that will present the council. And the, the dates for the measure you will be reflective of our, of our usual, um, HDL updates. So those things are timed in sequence so that we have the latest information, um, up to at least one, one previous quarter's currency.
Okay. That would be very helpful to be, have a ongoing calendar that aligns with the city council. And also I, as chair, um, I'm not really positive. So it appears that I was supposed to take roll call and all that. Who, who is actually like, um, doing the roll call vote? It, it seemed to go back and forth and I'm not really clear on what my role is or whoever the future chair is.
In, in future meetings, it's usually conducted by the city clerk who is absent today.
Okay.
And so that's, that's typically the way that it goes down. That's probably the reason for some of the, the disjointedness is everybody's kind of assuming different roles than they normally have in these meetings.
Okay. And that we haven't had one for a very long time. So I was just seeking clarification on, on who takes role and, and calls for the vote and all that.
Yeah, to clarify, under Rosenberg's rules, typically the way that it happens is taking role for the, taking role in roll call votes is usually the, the province and the city clerk or agency clerk. Um, with respect to announcement of the agenda items, that responsibility falls to the chair. Chair should also introduce the staff, uh, to give a report at the start of an agenda item and then invite questions of staff. And then, uh, usually there's an invitation for motions and seconds. And then discussion followed by a vote. Once there is motion and second on a vote, then the city clerk would re-enter and take the roll call vote.
So you're saying that at the next meeting, the chair would roll call vote and all that?
Well, that, that, the, the chair would, it would follow Rosenberg's rules in, in bringing forth the agenda item, which usually is like, you know, we're on agenda item number one, HDL company's presentation on measure you and then introduce, you know, uh, would Mr., uh, Lloyd de Yamas, you know, uh, give the, give the presentation? Obviously, we didn't, we didn't have him at the moment. But, um, that's, that's sim- sim- similar to how it happens. And then it's mainly controlling the flow of discussion. So it's first we hear from staff, then committee members get to ask comments of staff followed by usually, in my opinion, i- it should be followed by a motion. Do I have any motions? Uh, and then once you have motions and seconds, then the committee members may discuss amongst themselves, uh, weigh the pros and cons of whatever motions. And then when it's time to have a roll call vote, uh, the city clerk will, will start with the latest motion on the table and move backwards as appropriate.
Okay. And then as far as developing the agenda, city staff does that because we just basically got it and, you know, didn't have any input on the, on this particular one. I assume it's that way going forward?
Yes, it is. It's usually a, a, a point of contention with members on Brown Act bodies. Unfortunately, uh, any discussion or any, any conversation about the agenda has to take place in an open meeting during an agenda item for that very purpose. So it, it, the Brown Act, the Brown Act really makes it difficult.
So again, the city staff prepares the agenda and then once the city clerk opens the meeting, then whoever's the chair just runs it based on city staff's, um, recommendation, that business item number one. So the next time I would say, okay, we're on HDL presentation and then we let, uh, the presenter speak and then we ask for questions and then we vote. That chair does all that. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. And, and before the next meeting, if, if you're so inclined, uh, feel free to reach out to myself and Christie and we can give you a, a script to go through or, um, a kind of, uh, general way of handling it. As long as it's one-on-one, we don't run a foul of Brown Act.
Right.
So we'd be, we'd be free to talk with you outside of the meeting.
Okay. Yeah, because it's just been a very long time, uh, since we had our formation meeting over a year and we've never had an operating meeting. So, yeah, that was just kind of on the fly this time.
Yeah.
We got it done. It worked.
We did.
Yeah, it's all good. Yeah.
So are we, are we ready to adjourn the meeting?
I'm ready.
And we do not need a vote to adjourn. The chair may simply adjourn.
Yeah.
Okay.
At this time.
All right. I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at 3:35. Bye, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.